I'd also like to welcome to our 50th regular session Madam Evelyn Valiar. Ma'am, welcome sa mong regular session and with her is Miss Esther Keeling. The 50th regular session of the 7th City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Sandra Alcántara, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Him and City Him.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let us pray. Au jubila namin is ayitana regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah ar bil alamin. Ar rahmani rahim. Maliki yaumidin. Iya khanaabudu, iya khanaastain. Iddina sirath al mustaqim. Sirath alladina an'alt alaihim. Gairil magdubi alaihim murakdalin. Amin.
Bayang magiliw, belas na sila tanan. Angap ng puso, sadik lipoy buhay. Lupang hinirom, tulang ka ng magitin. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisiit. Sa lagat at puntok, sa simoy at sa langit pong bodha. May nilalang tula, at awit sa paglalang minamahal. Ang isnap ng wakap at buhit at umpay nadatining. Ang binuming na tarong nga terya, pa may di magtitigil. Lupan ang araw ng walatipagsita, buhay langit sa piling mo. Aming ligaya napag, may magkaapi ang mamatay ng dahil sa'yo. O probesya na minamahal, san suba nga ng dabo. Manwa kau na madayaw, ya na kuyun yang utaw. Malipayun kay palangga kau ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupahan mo, yang tanuma bungahon. Dakat muma nga suba, maday kay yang hisna. Kabuhian kawilihan ang kanan. Pumahan na dabo oriental, langit mo mapawaay. Yang kabutayan, yang kapatagan, maya maday magandahay. Masbihain pa kami kumatto, kami muuli anikar mo. Garbu dami na dabo wenyo, yang paksirbi sangkat jawan mo. Palangga syurang manmaki, lilyaman mo di makati. Sangkat kayang, sangkat kapatakan, sangkat agan ang kawakayu. Magkada yang manjeritay, kayang paliput na bendahan. Sangkat jawan yang sanglupat, iya iya nyaribahan. Dagamati mati na bagu, dagamati mati na dadu. Dagamati mati na buru, yang dagamati mati na. Dagamati mati na daru, dagamati mati na manu. Dagamati mati na buru, sa Diyos labang magkadagahu. Dagamati madayaw, dagamati mati.
The roll for.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez. Honorable Delphine Miones. Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaeta. Honorable Sarah Princess Campos, absent. Honorable Edmond Dupang Junior. Honorable Evelyn Kapiña Junior. Honorable Armand Valera. Honorable Sandra Paul Alcántara. Honorable Jerome Deeng Hirang. Honorable Roelio Pabio. Honorable Baudilio Miones. Honorable Daniel Macaubos. Honorable Tomas Tbiliano. Honorable Lorenzo Leonji Rabat.
Present.
Cora, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Kindly proceed with the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated December 3, 2024, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with our previous minutes? Should there be none, Honorable Miones Israehones?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I believe each member has a copy of the minutes dated December 3, 2024 during the 49th regular session of the 7th City Council. Mr. Chair, if there is no proposed correction to the minutes, therefore, I move for the adoption of the said minutes.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adoption of our previous minutes dated December 3, 2024. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, the previous minutes are adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
For question R, Mr. Chair. We verbally invited our OSKA head, Ma'am Evelyn Valiar, together with her staff, Ma'am Esther Keeling. This pertains to the confirmation of his appointment per letter of our mayor addressed to the Sanggune Panglusod of Mati, which will later on be manifested by the Chairman Committee on Good Government, the Honorable Evelyn Kapiña Junior.
Thank you. To first, before allowing Ma'am Evelyn Valiar to speak, may I request Honorable Miones for the suspension of rules.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. In order to give way to our very special guest this afternoon, I move for the suspension of the House rules.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Miones for the suspension of House rules, seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, House rules are now suspended. Madam Evelyn Valiar, our future Senior Citizens Affairs Head and the former retired head of the Provincial Social Welfare Office. Ma'am, the floor is yours. Good afternoon.
Okay, so Honorable Vice Mayor Lorenzo Rabat. Honorable August Badi. My friends, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Most of you know me already, but some maybe not. But you are all familiar and I know you already. I am hired as new OSKA head effective August 19, 2024. I am much privileged and I'm happy and thankful that I was... The city mayor, Honorable Michelle Rabat, has the trust and confidence to me to head the OSKA Center. Can I give you a brief of what's going on now in our center?
Please.
You might be wondering or surprised because we have different operation of our OSKA. This is for 2017 to 2016. The local government code wherein the local government unit are going to establish a system and the local government also can approve or legis... can develop initiate program for the local constituents. And the local government also should provide fund thereof. So I'm just reviewing the local government code. That's why in the operation of the OSKA Center now, it's not traditional. Upon assumption to duty, I already align some, most of our trust and direction effective September 2024 until December 2025. It's already in align. But before this thing happened, it was also approved by our CSWDO Mabel Fontellias because I have no administrative responsibility and accountability of the operation of the center. I am on the technical and the program aspect. Everything in dealing with administrative matters like funding, money and personneling, it should be approved by the Mabel Fontellias as the department head. So at this operation, we have Janet Robolo as the in charge of the center operation. She's in charge of the national pension, local pension, the ID, the registration and everything about the senior citizen that is already been existing for so long. Now the new projects that we are installing now in the center is the community base. So there are two, community base and center base. The center base now is our special project wherein I have designated Esther Keeling as my research and planning at the same time secretary to take care of all these things in the community. We just finished our consultation meeting to 22 barangays within the city to gather data and information and consult the senior citizens, what's going on, what are their situation. At this point in time, we already have 16 barangays submitted their profile. That means that the barangay now has their own data and information that could be used for our planning of developing a local program. Then we have to consolidate this then. Part of this, hopefully, we can, after the consultation and working with the Federation of Senior Citizens, we can conceptualize local program based on the needs and problems presented on their information. Then we have to develop guidelines, internal guidelines and also hopefully, within this next year, we can submit this to the Honorable Mayor for finalization of the conceptualized paper and the guidelines and request her endorsement to the Sanggune Panglusod for legislation. That means that if this program, the local program is funded by the city government, it's either from OSKA fund or the general fund, this could be our regular program for the senior citizen. That is our ambition and that is our goal to provide bitter and comfortable life of our senior citizen. So at this point in time, we are now having the series of consultation with the Federation President. I cannot work alone as a head without the support and cooperation of our presidents of the different barangay association. So I think this could be a good point for the local government of Mati for its desire and dream to help our senior citizens, especially the marginalized sector, the sick, the bedridden and the indigent. We have all the data. You can ask from us, you can scan your data because this is already the property, the data that we need, how to help our senior citizens. This is concrete data because it is formulated or given the... It was made by the different senior citizen members in the community. So that would be my accomplishment, simple accomplishment from September to December as of now. So I think, I hope and I pray, I know nothing is impossible under the name of God, that our goal and intention is to help our constituents, especially the marginalized elderly sector. And I think that's all. So thank you so much for this privilege. Thank you for the opportunity. For so many years, I was out of the government from 2004 and I came back in 2013. I was hired as consultant, technical assistant during the time of former late Governor Malanyon as consultant. I was the center manager of the Happy Home, the processing center of the former rebels. After that, I was hired again during the time of now Congressman Nelson de Yahirang as the provincial focal person of women. Until that time, I rest for a while, then I was active in the government, a non-government organization, the Dabo Oriental Volunteer Resource Group. There is a volunteer, senior citizens and retirees and I am also the assistant, the UCI San Coordinator of the Divine Mercy under former Governor Rosalin Way Lopez, our UCI San Coordinator. And that's me, as simple as that. Thank you very much. Thank you for your trust and confidence for this privilege to be your head of the OSKA.
Thank you. Thank you, Ma'am Evelyn, for enlightening us with your plans and programs as our new OSKA head this year. Do any members have questions regarding the statements of Ma'am Evelyn? Honorable Kapinha.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ma'am Evelyn.
Yes.
Ma'am, we would like to thank your presence this afternoon in this regular session, no? So kami nakaila ng buwisay mo and in fact, we've been together during the time of Honorable Cora Malanyon, you as the head of the Provincial Social Welfare. During those rice distribution times and after you retired from office, those consultancy works, no? So we believe that you are so effective being the new OSKA head of the city of Mati. This 7th City Council is very much happy with you working together, you know? And in behalf of this 7th City Council with our city vice mayor, we are looking forward for a good working relationship, of course. And late, late part of this session will be the approval of your appointment from our local chief executive. So again, thank you very much and looking forward for a good working relationship within the city of Mati.
Thank you very much for your trust and confidence. I will not promise anything, but I will work with heart, love and commitment.
Of course.
I was not dreaming of this OSKA head. I was out of this one, but maybe this is a calling. I'm 70 years old, so this is a call of a senior citizen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair. Ma'am Cabalumi, being the head of Social Welfare Office, meaning you have already had that heart for the people. Ang kaayuhan ba 'yan sa tao, ang imuhang giginitan 'yung office sa una. So with that, with this senior citizen, so easy for you, no? Ngama ma-plastar ang mga programa. So thank you for that.
I cannot do it alone. Of course, I need you as legislator and I need the support. Of course, the mayor is there and of course, I need God always in me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Kapinha. Thank you, Ma'am Evelyn, no? If there are no more questions by the members, may we invite you in the front, Ma'am Evelyn, together with your staff for a quick photo opportunity. We are still under suspended House rules. Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Ma'am Evelyn Valiar. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Chair, I move for the lifting of the suspended House rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended House rules. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, the suspended House rules are now lifted.
Verbalize our other ports of observations.
Thank you. Privilege R is now upon us. Are there any reports, observations, requests by the members? Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Good afternoon to 7th City Council and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
The Communication Number 413 Series of 2024, Certified Urgent from Local Chief Executive. I would like to request from the August Body that measure to be tackled during unassigned business without need suspension of the House rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pabio that Communication 413 Certified Urgent be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Deeng Hirang is recognized, followed by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mayong hapon sa tanan.
Mayong hapon.
On behalf of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation would like to request that Communication Number 385-2024 be discussed under unassigned business on suspended House rules. This is regarding the request to the Sanggune Panglusod to pass a resolution declaring the Kadalaan Wetland in Balagay Dahikan as local conservation area. It was referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection last month, but because of the busy schedule of the members of this August Body, wagyu chan sa magkaroon o meeting, Mr. Presiding Officer. So I'd like to appeal to the members kung pwede ma-discuss lato unya under unassigned business on suspended House rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Monis ang kadalaan, no?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There's a request by the Honorable Deeng Hirang that Communication 385, not certified urgent, but requested to be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Rabat Gaeta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have here Communication Number 418, refer to the Committee on Education. It's an urgent communication from our local chief executive pertaining to the MOA between the city government of Mati and Dorso for the masked friendship games. Since it's certified urgent, Mr. Chair, may I request that this be, this communication be tackled under unassigned business without the need of suspending the House rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta that Communication 418, certified urgent, be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Kapinha is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chair, for communications, and I have here one communication referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation. Communication Number 419-2024, Signified Urgent from our local chief executive. And another urgent communication, Mr. Chair, Communication 420, refer to the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountabilities. I wish to have an approval from the members of this August Body that these two communications be tackled under unassigned business without suspending the House rules. And Communication Number 421-2024, a letter from our local chief executive for the confirmation of the appointment of Ma'am Evelyn A. Valiar. I wish to have an approval from the members of this August Body that this communication be tackled under unassigned business during suspended House rules for the discussion and possible approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Kapinha that Communications 419 and 420 be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules. And Communication 421, not certified urgent, but requested to be tackled under unassigned business under suspended House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I believe there are no other requests under Privilege R. May we proceed with the next item. Hi, Honorable Miones.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Since this evening, tonight is the Christmas party of the Sanggune Panglusod. Of course, with the employees, staff, employees and staff so that we can save time. Is it okay? I believe there is no objection from the members of the body. I believe each one has a copy of the order of business. May I request the secretary to no longer read the whole context of the communication and messages, but instead direct to the referral to the concerned committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Miones. There is a request by the Honorable Miones to make do without the reading of communications and messages in detail. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary. This is in lieu of our Christmas party, which Honorable Miones also pledged to. 10,000? 10,000 for raffle and prizes.
For proposed ordinance, we have one authored by Honorable Armand Valera. An ordinance prescribing calibration and sealing of dispensing pumps of liquid petroleum products, retail outlets in the city of Mati, imposing fees in the registration, sealing of dispensing pumps, providing penalties in violation thereof and for other purposes. Refer to the Committee on Energy and Water Utilities through the Chairman, Honorable Valera. No proposed resolution for first reading. Communication messages, Communication Number 409. This is for the information of the honorable SP members. Same with Communication Number 410, pertaining to Executive Order Number 115. Communication Number 411, for information of the honorable SP members, pertaining to Executive Order Number 116. Communication Number 412, for the information of the honorable SP members. This pertains to Executive Order Number 117. Communication Number 413, an urgent letter from our local chief executive as manifested by the Chairman Committee on Health, the Honorable Pabio. This will be discussed under assigned business. Communication Number 414, for the information of the honorable SP members, pertaining to Executive Order Number 118. Communication Number 415, same for the information of the honorable SP members, pertaining to Executive Order Number 119. Communication Number 416, refer to Chairman Committee on Transportation. This pertains to a letter of our local chief executive addressed to the honorable SP members for the Chairman Committee on Transportation to conduct public hearing. Communication Number 417, for the information of the honorable SP members, pertaining to Executive Order Number 120. Communication Number 418, an urgent communication from our local chief executive as manifested by Chairman Committee on Education, the Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaeta. This will be discussed under unassigned business pertaining to the memorandum agreement between Dorso and the city government of Mati. Communication Number 419, an urgent communication from our local chief executive refer to the honorable Kapinha, Chairman Committee on Finance, pertaining to the memorandum agreement between the City Savings Bank and the city government of Mati relative to the... relative to their salary loan. Communication number 420, an urgent communication from our local chief executive, refer to the honorable Kapinia, Chairman of Committee on Good Government. We, this will be discussed under assigned business for the proposed city ordinance. And last communication, Mr. Chair, communication number 421, refer to Chairman of Committee on Good Government pertaining to the confirmation of appointment of Miss Evelyn Valiar as head of the Office of Senior Citizen Affairs for one term equivalent for a three-year term. This will be discussed under unassigned business suspended House rules. That's all for communications. For unfinished business, none. Business for today for second reading, no proposed resolution and ordinance. For unassigned business, we have urgent communications, Mr. Chair, for discussion and approval.
Thank you. Honorable Miñones is first recognized for the urgent communication.
I move for the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miñones for the conversion of this body into committee as a whole. Do any members second this? Seconded by all the members, we are now converted into committee as a whole, and Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Communication number 413 series of 2024, open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 413 as presented by the Honorable Pabio. If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption as committee as a whole recommendation. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommended for communication 413. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Rabat Gaita is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for any queries or discussion pertaining to communication number 418.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 418 as presented by the Honorable Rabat Gaita. Are there any discussions? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation. Communication number 418, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaita for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. Since this is seconded, there's no objections. This motion is carried. Honorable Kapinia is recognized. Communications 419 and 420.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For communication number 419, the floor now is open for any discussions with regards to the Mowa between the City Savings Union Bank, City Savings Bank, and the Local Government Unit of Mati.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communication as presented by the Honorable Kapinia. Are there any? If there, if there are none, please proceed, Honorable Kapinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for, as requested in communication number 419, series of 20, dash 2024. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for communication 419. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable Kapinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for communication number 420-2024, refer to the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountabilities for the reallocation of the following various positions. As we can see in the communication, there are a lot of positions to be reallocated. So the floor now is open for any discussion and queries.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communication as presented by the Honorable Kapinia. If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for an information of the members of this August body that these positions are already filled and to be distributed in, reallocated in different offices within this city of Mati. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 420-2024. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication 420. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion, this motion is carried. Honorable Miñones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miñones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary, and Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you again, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the passage, a resolution authorizing Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor, to sign for in behalf of the City Government of Mati between the Department of Health and Davao Center for the health development and debt organization of the medical transport vehicle, including the medical equipment amounting to 1,958,000 pesos intended for the use of, for the use by the City Health Office. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for a passage of a resolution. Members to second his motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Rabat Gaita is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Product of communication number 418. In behalf of the Committee on Education, I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor, Honorable Michelle Marie Denise Nrabat, to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and on behalf of the Local Government Unit of the City of Mati with Davao Oriental State University to provide support for the delegates of the Mast Friendship Games in the amount of 2,500,000 pesos. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaita for a passage of a resolution, seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang and the rest of the members. If there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried. Honorable Kapinia is recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. For communication number 419-2024, Mr. Chair, I now move for a resolution authorizing local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Nrabat, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the Local Government Unit, Local Government of Mati, the memorandum of agreement with the City Savings Bank Incorporated, and other related documents relative to the launching of the multipurpose loan facility to be extended to qualified officials and employees of the city of Mati. I now move for the passage of the resolution. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for a passage of a resolution. Members to second his motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable Kapinia.
Thank you. For communication number 420, Mr. Chair, the communication requires an ordinance, passage of an ordinance. Therefore, I now move for the passage of an city ordinance number 621, 2024, an ordinance reallocating positions from various offices of the city of Mati. I believe every member has a copy of the proposed city ordinance number 621-2024. I now move for its second reading. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for the passage of city ordinance number 621, series of 2024, on its second reading. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable Kapinia.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if there is no objection from the members of this August body, that may I request that this proposed ordinance be tackled under unassigned business during suspended House rules for the possibility of approval for third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable, there's a request by the Honorable Kapinia that city ordinance number 621 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended House rules for its possible approval on its third and final reading. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are done with all the urgent resolutions. We are still to properly facilitate the non-urgent resolutions or communications. Honorable Miñones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. In order to address the request of the handsome City Councillor, Councillor Jimboi Dayang Hirang, I move for the suspension of the House rule, at the same time, the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miñones for the suspension of House rules, at the same time, the conversion of this body into committee as a whole. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, House rules are now suspended. We are converted into committee as a whole, and Honorable Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. But before the discussion, I'd like to say something about the declaration, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Please proceed.
The declaration of the Kadalaan Wetland as a local conservation area will ensure the protection and preservation of this valuable ecosystem for future generations. It also plays a crucial role in regulating water flow, preventing flooding, and filtering pollutants. This will also promote sustainable development and environmental conservation within the Barangay and the entire city. And it serves as a habitat of wildlife species like the migratory seabirds and wild duck species, Mr. Presiding Officer. Naghay makita dito ng mga sea eagle, heron, et cetera. And including also flora, Mr. Presiding Officer. And nangutana kanina si Councillor Dodokun sa kadakusya. It measures more or less four hectares, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. This is untitled land.
Ang owner, Mr. Presiding Officer, privately owned by Mr. Jimmy Gomez.
Okay. Thank you.
The floor is now open for any discussion regarding the said requests. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communication presented by the Honorable Dayang Hirang with a very beautiful background. If there are none, Honorable Miñones.
Thank you, Councillor Jimboi, for the information.
Yes.
The, the good Presiding Officer, as asking well ago that if that lot is private or public, and you said it's a public. Wala ba'y conflict to ano if we declare? Because that's a private, it is the prerogative of the private to develop his own land.
Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, ang owner miss mo sa property, Mr. Presiding Officer, requested that the magkaroon ng assessment sa area and i-declare na siya para maprotektahan ang atuang Kadalaan Wetlands, Mr. Presiding Officer.
With, with the consent of the owner?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer. Nail letter. One minute recess, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay. Few minutes recess is declared.
Ang nail letter ang...
Session is resumed. Please proceed, Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding communication number 385. I so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for communication 385. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried. Honorable Kapinia is recognized. Communication 421.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for communication number 421, the confirmation of the appointment of Ma'am Evelyn Valiar. The floor now is open for any discussions.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 421 as presented by Honorable Kapinia. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 421-2024. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miñones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miñones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary, and Honorable Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring the Kadalaan Wetland in Barangay Dahikan as local conservation area. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for a passage of resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Kapinia is recognized for communication 421, and please remain for city ordinance number 621.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, for, in behalf of the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountabilities, I now move for the passage of a resolution confirming the appointment of Mrs. Evelyn A. Valiar as head of the Office of the Senior Citizens Affairs for one term equivalent to three years' term and is non-renewable with a salary equivalent to salary grade then. I believe every member has a copy of this resolution. I now move for the passage of the said resolution, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for a passage of resolution. Do any members second this motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Kapinia is still recognized for city ordinance number 621.
Thank you. For and in behalf of the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountabilities, Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of the city ordinance number 621, series of 2024, an ordinance reallocating positions from various offices of the city of Mati. I now move for the city ordinance number 621, series of 2024, for its third and final reading. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Kapinia for the passage of city ordinance number 621 on its third and final reading. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
All members voted for the measure. No objection, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And city ordinance number 621 is approved on its third and final reading. We are still under suspended House rules. Honorable Miñones is recognized.
I move for the lifting of the suspended House rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miñones for the lifting of suspended House rules, seconded by all the members. Suspended House rules are now lifted. What's the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For announcement, Sanggulian Panglutsod of Mati Christmas party at Adelina Sodel, 6:00 p.m. And on December 13, Friday, Christmas saya sa mga empleyado, Christmas party of the city employees at Mayo Francisco Girabat Park and Beowuk, 5:00 p.m. Arrival of the employees and the program will start at 6:00 p.m. The invitations shall be served by our staff after the session.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. For our party later, I think stubs were distributed to your offices na pulo each for the staff para sa ilang pagkaon. And then, on December 24, natay regular session eh, and December 30, scheduled regular session. Ah, 31, sorry. 24 and 31. Twenty, 31 is a holiday?
Delete, guys.
Anyway, the session will push through on December 24 and 31. Kukin sila'y available, magattend. Wala mai urgent matters now. We tackled everything already this year. Thank you.
Katalang. Holiday and 24, guys. 26. Hindi, holiday and 26, 26, guys.
Sorry, the regular session will be on December 26. Since December 24 is a holiday, bilin nato i-postpone. Dayon nato ang regular session of the 26th. And on December 31. Kukin sila'y nadre, magattend. And then, katalang. Christmas party nato later is at 6 o'clock p.m., third floor, roof deck, Adelina Hotel. See you all. Wear your comfy attire. Please proceed to next item.
Adjournment, followed by closing prayer by the Honorable Sander Paul Alcantara.
Thank you. Honorable Alcantara is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I move for the adjournment of this 58th regular session, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Alcantara for the adjournment of the day's session. Seconded by all the members. Session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
Let us pray. Audjubillah minashshaitan rajim, bismillah rahmanir rahim, alhamdulillah rabbil alamin, arrahmanir rahim. Maaliki yaumidin, iyyah khannabudu, iyyah khannastain, idhina sirath al mustaqim, sirathalladina adhaumta alaihim, gairil magdubi alaihim, wulad dalin. Amin.